Library Board to Board of Trustees meeting to order. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we adopt the agenda, we're going to table the discussion, Item Six, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Minutes. So we'll be approving the minutes of this meeting, eight thirteen, I mean, the September meeting, September tenth, and the August meeting at the October meeting. So with that said, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. And the second, okay. We've got Francis Cornermark. Thank you. Call to the public. All right. We'll move on to the discussion items. And Karina Martinez, our library supervisor, will present on National Library Card Month.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Well, September is a special month because we're celebrating National Library Card Sign Up Month. This is coming from the American Library Association. So each year they take September as this month. And this year's theme is One Library and Less Possibilities. So we're encouraging our patrons and our community to come to the libraries and sign up for a library card, which is free. There's different services that we offer with library cards. It goes beyond just books and movies. We can do online resources, cultural passes, and become part of the programs and activities. Each library branch is celebrating on their own way. You might find raffles, a different desk, sweet trees to enjoy, and even like a giant poster of the library card. So like a cool picture they can take with. So we have that, the main library. So it's either if you're renewing your library card or getting a new library card, you will be getting the new design that we're promoting, which is this is coming from a local artist. And now it's a part of our library card. And I have a little presentation on where to go to obtain a library card online as well. So there's different ways, but it will take you to the same page. Either it can be through the City of Nogales website. So we go under Departments. We can find the Library Department down here. We have it open right here. And down here is to obtain a library card. And it's going to take you to a form. After this form is filled out, that will be submitted to us. And we'll be calling the patron to either come and pick it up or give them their correct numbers, their correct library card numbers. So that's one way. The other way, again, here in our website, we have our online catalog. So it's asking me if I want to go to this other website. So I say yes. So this is our online catalog. I update this every month with different book recommendations, calendars of events. But up in here, we have the September Library Card Sign Up Month. You click on it, and it will take you back to the City of Nogales website where you can fill out your library card form. So you, to obtain your library card, you can do it online or visit any of our four branches. And yeah, thank you. That's everything I have for today for the Library Card Sign Up Month.
Any questions? Renee?
I'm unfamiliar with what a cultural pass is. Would you describe one?
Yes. So that's our partnership with have with Act One. So what they do is we have cultural passes to different sites of museums, sews. It starts like from even two back residuos there. The sews in Phoenix, in Tucson. So just with your library card, you're going to go to the rack where we have those tickets. You go up to the front, show your library card. And that pass gives you two entries for each site.
So is it free?
It is free with your library card. And again, your library card is free. So all these services are.
If you have a little poster, I would be delighted as a Friends of the Library to put it in our Friends cabinets.
Sure. Yeah, for sure.
That's a great idea. Good. Any other que-- I have a question. I can't quite read that form. It's residents, right, only? You don't have to be a citizen to get a library card?
No.
Okay, because we were reviewing the reading policy and the policies. And it did mention citizen in there. It's resident.
Now, now it's open for everyone.
In Santa Cruz County?
Or even from outside.
Oh, really? You don't go by address?
Tucson, or you know, we have numbers coming down. Those that can get library cards too. People from Mexico too, they can get their library cards. As long as we have like, you know, their information. We just have their name, phone number, email, just, just in a way of contact. But yeah, anyone can get a library card.
Oh, okay. Interesting. And my other question is statistics. We used to get statistics about how many library cards are issued, you know, from, for each branch. Do you have those? Or will you at least collect them for September? So we'll know if your promotion has, you know?
Sure, yeah. That's kept in our stats, monthly stats from each library. I'm sure I can share that with you guys next month.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Karina. And now we're going to talk, Victor is going to talk about the teen programs.
Good morning. I'm told to speak Spanish.
Do we have an interpreter? Will someone summarize for those of us who don't speak Spanish? Okay. This is someone, can you summarize? Okay.
Go for it.
Bueno, les voy a pasar las actividades que tenemos.
He's just going to pass out the activities?
Yeah, I see that.
Lo que les estamos pasando son las actividades que tenemos para el mes de septiembre. Ahí lo pueden ver en la pantalla. Esas son las actividades que tenemos. Vamos a comenzar primeramente con Arcilla. Son las actividades que tenemos, no? Que va a ser el ocho y el dos. Esas actividades pues es para fomentar pues ahora sí que todo lo que tenga que ver pues con manualidades y todo, y hacer otros tipos de actividades pues ahí en la biblioteca. Ya tuvimos el primera actividad. Al final voy a pasar algunas fotos de las creaciones que han hecho los muchachos.
So he's mentioning that on the eighth and the twelve, it's basically just like arts and crafts? That they, that he's going to share some pictures?
That's the motivational, motivational workshop?
The creativity play.
La segunda actividad que tenemos, ese va a ser impartido por Santos Yescas. Esta actividad es más que nada es para fomentar que los jóvenes busquen una forma de tener ingresos, no? Ya sea con, más que nada, este se trata de cómo generar empleos, o sea, cómo viene siendo, pues más que nada, ese es como el tema principal. Cómo hacer actividades para que uno pueda, pueda, pueda aprender a aprender.
So he's, he's mentioning about the motivational workshop. And this is a training hosted by Santos Yescas. And it's about teaching teens or people or just teens?
Sí, teens or?
On just different activities that they can do to generate money.
También es para, específicamente para adolescentes, pero no hay ningún problema si algún niño o adulto puede ir. Entonces, no, está abierto para cualquier público.
It's for teens, but there's no issue if an adult, you know, tags along.
Not for teens.
Young at heart.
Bueno, otras de las actividades que tenemos es Paints in Time. Ahí se les va a dar un Canva donde los muchachos van a expresar pues ahora sí que todo lo que tienen, que tienen ellos, no? De pues las actividades que tiene, la, la, todos sus, todas las cosas artísticas de, de los muchachos.
Okay. This is on Canva?
Sí, es, sí, es un Canva.
Oh, okay, okay. So this is just expressing themselves through paint on art and stuff like that Monday twenty second and Friday the twenty sixth?
Y ya, todos los viernes tenemos viernes de películas y palomitas. Y ya los muchachos pues ven las películas y.
Okay. And movies and popcorn every Friday?
Movies and popcorn every Friday.
It's free.
It's free. Esas son algunas de las creaciones que han hecho los muchachos. Son muy artistas.
Those are some of the things that they?
Este lo de Arcilla, no? Vamos a pasar al siguiente. También han hecho el Slime. Y en este tuvimos una participación bastante amplia. Vinieron, yo creo que aproximadamente entre treinta y cinco, treinta y cinco muchachos. Y la verdad, no nos dábamos abasto. Las instalaciones estabamos un poquito, nos quedamos cortos. Sí, sí, sí fue, fue todo un éxito. Y lo que me gustó mucho es que los muchachos me ayudaron incluso a pues ahora sí que a limpiar todo porque pues el Slime.
Messy. But he's, he's saying that there was an attendance of about thirty-five youths for this activity. And that it was a huge success and also a huge mess. And that he was very grateful that they helped him clean.
Gracias. Ah, y otra cosa, estamos colaborando con Maritza Lynn. Pues ella es una autora de aquí de Nogales. Les está enseñando a las muchachas a hacer su propio libro. Entonces, es, la meta es que ellos hagan su propio libro. Y vamos a esperar que todo siga avanzando.
What's her name? ¿Cómo se llama?
Maritza Lynn.
Lynn?
Igera.
Okay. So there's this young girl, Maritza, who's teaching kids how to write a book. And the goal is for them to publish their book. Yes, she's a local writer.
These are all of them, God?
No, no está en el player.
Right.
Yeah, and that's separate from what's on the teens activity. So they're, the students and Maritza Lynn are creating a book. And they want to have that book ready to go. And hopefully, we get to take it to the book festival. The Festival of Books at the U of A. So that's the plan.
In Tucson?
Mm-hmm. There's, that's the plan.
Are you going to have a booth there or?
As long as the teens have, meet their deadline, I think we will.
When is the deadline?
September thirtieth, so.
Is that on the calendar?
Okay.
Is that on the calendar, the September calendar?
For the create, oh, this is just the activities. This is separate. This is separate.
And this is a teenager who's leading it? Or who's, who's doing that?
This is a local author. She's been here before to give presentations. I think her name is Maritza Lynn Igera.
The fire department book or?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, good. Okay.
Una pregunta. Está viendo los, los horarios. La mayoría de los ni, de los niños de edad esta, se supone que todavía están en la escuela a esas horas? O no? Okay. Precisamente, las, las actividades. Not my business. Las actividades que, que todo tiene un porqué, no? Las, son después de las dos. Porque precisamente yo me fui fijando cuando salían los muchachos. Entonces, yo, yo al principio estaba tanteando que a las doce, once, y luego ya veía que están en la escuela. Y mayoría de los muchachos salen a las dos. Hay unos que incluso salen hasta las cuatro. Pero ya como viendo como la media, sabes qué? Pues las dos me parece buena hora porque pues ya no interrumpen las actividades de las, de la escuela. Gracias.
Oh, is that about?
Sí.
Sorry. So he was just about to ask about the, the times. And so the, the time that they have for the activities is two because some of the charter schools are, some of the students are out by that time. So it's to accommodate all students. Some of them don't get out until four. And he's just mentioning that, you know, they just found a time that works for almost everyone. And yeah, so that, that's the purpose of those times.
Victor, ¿cuántas escuelas hay abajo ya? How many schools are there downtown already?
Two, three.
Que tengo ubicadas, son como tres, cuatro más o menos. I know there's one by, under la vie de Paris, no? La una. And there's one where the BPOE used to be, the?
Yes, Downtown Academy.
La Downtown.
Yeah, it's Downtown Pinnacle and then Edoption.
These are academies.
Yes.
Y gracias a Dios pues casi.
And then there's also Colegio Petit as well.
This is new, me parece.
Well, it's not new, pero I mean.
Está cerquita.
So it's fine.
It's close, eh? Sí, y todos los muchachos pues han estado viniendo. Entonces, poco a poco pues ya me vi dando cuenta pues de, estos son de la Downtown, estos son de la Edoption, incluso de la, tenemos incluso hasta de Río Rico. Precisamente de Río Rico tengo una muchacha que es la que está integrados en el grupo de, de, para crear su propio libro. Una de ellas es de Río Rico y otra de ellas es de Nogales. Yo creo que ya todas las demás sí son de aquí de estas escuelas. Entonces, sí, de Nogales y esta de Río Rico.
Thank you. Thank you, Victor. I guess we have to, oh, you have a question?
Do we have teen programs in other communities? Like Tubaq, Río Rico, Sonoyta?
Okay. We're beginning in Río Rico. We do have the Vinyl Club. And they're starting to do something on Saturdays. It's going to be starting in September. So we're starting to get that word out, out there. And we more than welcome the board to, you know, help us out in the outlying communities to get those started. Because I think the teens are there. They just need to know that the libraries are there.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Well, thank, thank you, Victor, for that report. And the, we have a copy of the budget. I believe it's given to us last meeting. And what I'd like to do today is if you have any questions about it, could you ask those questions? And then we'll try to get them answered for the discussion in October when our chair has returned for the meeting. So if you've, have you had a chance to look at it? And do you have any, any questions that, that we might be able to look into for next meeting? I, I had a question about the staff. And that seems to be cut. Let's see, that's reduced. Is that correct? The budget? See where that is for staff. Payroll, regular employees, and that's been decreased? No? Regular employees. Payroll.
So these are questions that if you have them now, I will take them. And if it's payroll, I will ask finance. And I will have the answers for you for next month.
Okay.
So if the questions aren't here right now, you're more than welcome to email them to me. And I'll have your answers for next month.
Okay, so, yes.
Can I just ask a general question? The IGA is up for renewal next year. Is there an assumption that nothing changes with the IGA? Hence, the budget was written with that in mind?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Fifty fifty, right? Fifty percent from the county and fifty from the city. Okay. So do email your questions to Denisa if you have them. And we'll go over that in more detail at the next meeting.
Let me, I just remembered that we did have a staff member retire last.
That's what I was wondering.
So that was take, that was a big chunk too. So that staff member retiring with their retirement and everything, that's why the payroll did go down a bit. So that's one of the reasons.
So a staff member retired, and you have not replaced that staff member yet?
Yes, we did. But the, the insurance was different. They had a higher insurance. There's different higher, there's different insurances if you're single, if you're family. So all that has to do with it. And that particular staff was here for almost thirty years. So there was a different tier that they were on. So that's the only reason that.
Okay.
That's the reason that the budget looks a little low for the.
And are the, the grants, are they paying for any staff now?
Grants are paying for two part-time workers. One is in Río Rico and the other part-timer is in Nogales.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, for the, moving along to the reading policy. I believe it's been complete. It's been reviewed now by Arlene and Aunt Francisco. And I will be sending it to Denisa so she can answer some of our questions. And perhaps some type of a copy for us for the, for the next meeting or the meeting following that. I am afraid I will not be at the October meeting. So I will send any, any kind of information ahead of time. We have found quite a few paragraphs in that reading policy that no longer apply. We don't have videocast sets anymore. And so it, it's going to have to be revised. And we have suggestions for revisions. So we're, we're good to go. All right. The Friends update. We are exploring a book exchange with a library in Nogales so that we can get books in English there and then books in Spanish for our little free libraries. And we kind of have complications because of customs coming through with books, afraid we're going to be selling them. And then we are waiting to find out about our grant funds from South Thirty-two. We haven't, we know we will be getting those sometime ten thousand dollars. And we're waiting to hear from the HSLP's Family Foundation if our application has been successful for another. I think we applied for twenty thousand this time from them. And Anna Dawn provided cards for us to mail out to people who were on the list for donating for our centennial event. And so we have every member, there are eight of us, I believe, and every member has twenty names. So if you get a card for donation to the Friends of the Library, please do, please consider doing that. We have a website. Let's Read Santa Cruz. And you can get to that from the Public Library website as well. Let's see, the big, oh, yes. Renee is going, composed a really nice letter to send to the white elephant in, in Green Valley who offers books to various entities. And we hope that they will send us some. Have you had a response yet?
No, I just mailed it last Friday. So I'll check in with them this week. If I don't hear. But they seemed excited about it.
Good. And the big event at the month is the Santa Cruz County Fair. And we will have a booth. We're going to have a booth with the Nogales Women's Club. And lots of book giveaway, hopefully some donations and some library card signup. So that's on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And don't miss the, the, what are they, the rides? Cotton candy and all that stuff. The children come on Friday morning, about nine to noon. And it's, it's, it's quite fun. They open up the rides when they come. And they hit the, they hit the books, the library friends booth on the way out because they're going to take books that we have donated. And that's all that I have from the Friends. Okay.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Is the Friends of the Library a five oh one C three?
It is indeed.
Okay.
So you can write off any of your donations. Yes, we have one for that. I'm going to pass this around. This was designed by Renee. And if you haven't seen it at your libraries, just pass that around. This is to let people know about our little free libraries. And also, you can get a library card with a QC there, so. Oh, I have seven boxes for you all. Yes. And they're, they're for the fair. But you can take what doesn't, isn't given away. I have a lot of books from this state and from Patagonia Library.
I was inquiring about the bookmarks.
Oh, bookmarks? No, we don't have, we need, you can have these too.
So Will, I'm under the impression that the hours need edited because of the Saturday. And then all libraries appear to be the same hours now. They're, they don't differentiate. So we'll change that. If there's anything else, any, from the library that you want changed on that before we go into the second printing, please let, let us, me in particular, know.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you. And, okay, let's look at the board reports. Do we have any board reports on the various libraries? Going on in Nogales or Río Rico? We don't have our Tubaq rep here? No, no news? Well, Sonoyta, we have the tutor position posted, trying to get a teenager over sixteen, I understand, to, to have this job as tutor. We so far haven't had anyone actually applying. And the library clerk, Melina, has done a nice YA section that she just set up. And she always promotes the new books. It's, it's very nice that she, she has set up. We also have a bulletin board to let people know what's going on in the community, and that's real helpful. There's a tribute to former, she wasn't a librarian clerk, but Pat Gombly was. She goes back to when a truck, a van brought books to Elgin, to the little grocery store and post office. And she was in charge of that, of the books, as well as being postmistress. She died recently. And we have, we're promoting a book giveaway, donation or money donation in her memory. And I have a couple of books for you for the Sonoyta Library in memory of Pat. Okay. So with no further ado, we'll go to the Library Directors Report.
Karina, will you go ahead and take the first four, please?
Yes. For the Polaris review of the library board, I know this has been in the agenda for quite some time now. But what I'm thinking is now we can set the week of September twenty-second till September twenty-fifth. You guys can either visit Nogales or Río Rico. So we can show you around our website and how to work around it. So I can email this, this back to you and just respond back time, the, the time and date that you were planning to, to be at the library. So we can have like one staff member with you to show you on the computer and maybe on like on your phone as well, how to log in and navigate the catalog. For the outreach events, so we attended the Community Baby Shower by the Family Resource Center. Our staff there gave out books and baby wipes to expecting mothers. And that same day, we had the Nogales Police Department National Night Out. We were there and we were, we got pretty wet. It rained really hard that day, but it was a lot of fun. We had fun with the kids and the families. We gave out books, prizes, and library cards. So it was pretty fun, but the rain didn't stop us. As you mentioned, Juanita, yeah, that's a Nogales library position for tutors still open until we fill. We haven't had like really good luck on that. But let's keep promoting that position so we can get a fill as, as soon as possible. And yeah, library hours are changing for Río Rico. So Río Rico will be open one Saturday per month, especially for their book club and kids' arts and craft. So for Río Rico, it's going to be open from eleven to one on September thirteenth, October eleventh, and November eighth. And starting next week, the fall hours also are changing in the main library, in Nogales Public Library. Monday through Thursday from nine to five, Fridays from nine to four, and Saturdays from ten to two. That starts next week. So the first Saturday would be September twentieth. I'll go ahead and pass this around.
You said at Nogales, it's from eleven to two?
It is from ten to two.
Ten to two.
Río Rico, it's from eleven to one.
Eleven, one.
Yeah. We have the Border Fashion Show. We got contact back again. We had this last year. We had this last year. So they want to host it at the Nogales Public Library again. So we have a date, we're still near hours, but in October third, that's a Friday. So the Border Fashion Show will be happening at the library again.
And we will email all of you, so you're, you come by and support the local youth who are gonna be models and dressers and everything. It's a great event, it's a great community event and we just love that it's, that the library's being included. I'm gonna go ahead and go with Coffee with a Cop. We're gonna start that again. We've made contact with a sergeant at the police department and it's gonna start October, November at the Nogales Public Library. And it's a free event where even the community is more than willing to come and just talk about issues with their cop. And it's just gonna be open. Coffee, it is what it says, it's Coffee with a Cop. Where they just come and talk issues and it's gonna be at the library.
Are they all there all day during hours?
No, there's gonna, we do not have the hours yet. When we have that, we will let the board know as well. There's, it's a certain hour. And to start off, we did start off the America Arizona two fifty last month with our author that came in to talk. I know Anna Dawn was there, I think Renee was there for the author talk. And to continue on that note, the America Arizona two fifty, we're gonna be doing Veterans Day Bulletin Boards at all libraries. I highly encourage all of you to email your library or email us any veterans that you know of or that you know now or were, maybe one of you is a veteran, I don't know. Email us a picture if you want to and we will include them. We will also be working with the Presidio in Tuba to be doing an exhibit at the Tuba Library in November and we're gonna be doing other events at the other libraries for the America two fifty. And I will talk about Miami Go's Conference that I went to last month and that I will be attending again in November. I'll bring that up in the next meeting. That's it.
Thank you, all right, thank you. Okay, future agenda items, obviously the budget and the reading policy. Is there, are there other things you'd like to discuss at the next meeting?
I was wondering if we could get an update on the Project Felt grant. That's, it's a grant that was awarded by the Department, Arizona Department of Education to, who was the lead? Anita, was that the U of A?
In the superintendent.
Oh, it's, it's the county superintendent, the school's office, the U of A and the Family Resource Centers and the library are participating. It's an early literacy grant that they received.
Okay.
Yeah, is that okay? And then maybe if you have anything, also an update on the partnership with the Mariposa Grant?
Yeah, right. That meeting was rescheduled or the presentation with the Mariposa Grant, right? Okay, so you'll let us know when that is rescheduled and we can discuss either what happens at the meeting or further information about what's happening, okay? All right, well, our next meeting is October eighth.
Can I interject? I was wondering about an update on the digital library. I think it was called Hoopla.
Yeah, we'll bring that to you next month. We are actually getting training at the end of this month.
Okay.
So we're gonna invite the board also to get trained on Hoopla. You're gonna download that app, you're gonna see movies, magazines.
The Río Rico Book Club will love that.
Yeah, it's gonna be great, it's coming up.
The end of this month.
Yeah, the end of this month. We're getting trained at the end of this month, so it'll just coincide with the meeting of next month. So we'll do a presentation for the board on Hoopla. It's called Hoopla.
Yes, okay. All right, if there's nothing else, do I have a, oh, I did say the next meeting was October eighth. A motion to adjourn? Okay, a second? Yes, yes, please. Thank you. Okay, thank you and we'll see you next month. Thank you very much. Okay, did you get that all down?